All right, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started because I don't think many more people will join. But I just wanted to bring us together. And we do have everyone on the committee and the president here, so we definitely have a forum. So thank you, committee, for joining, Counselor Allen and Counselor Hurst. And Mr. President, thank you for joining as well. So I just wanted to get the Civil Rights Subcommittee together to just discuss one thing. And that's a racial equity review board that will comprise of five to seven community members, so residents of Springfield and different, with different backgrounds and different skill sets. And I kind of wanted to like get you guys input or advice on what you were thinking. I will start off with what I'm thinking. Like I said, it would be five to seven randomly selected folks. And hopefully, you know, we could get some feedback on who we will want to be on this racial equity review board. I have a couple of ideas already. And we would select these individuals. I don't really have a selection criteria together, but a few things that I would like the review board to work on is, you know, an audit of where the grant money that comes into the city that is for community use is going. Is the information going out to certain individuals ahead of time? Are the awardees causing harm to the people that they are serving? So I have one example that I got a personal report on from some people in the community. If CJ's towing, they got awarded a contract from the city. And this is just hearsay, so I'm just telling you what I received. And they, some people in the black community was not treated respectfully by the towing company. And it was a, it was a city, it is a city contract. So we want to make sure people who are awarded these contracts are treating everybody equitably and fairly. And we want to ensure that everyone's given a fair opportunity when these contracts go out to bid. So I think having a racial equity review board even reviewing some of the requests for proposals to make sure that everyone will have a fair opportunity in meeting the criteria would be great. And also, you know, just examining the things that I just said. So is there any questions or comments on that first item that I said?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I'll raise my hand.
Okay, you don't have to, there's just a few of us.
I mean, I think when I talked to Justin about this kind of an idea last year, I wasn't sure exactly. I didn't have a plan in my head as to what the community needed. But, I mean, that sounds, I viewed that we need someplace where people can go. I mean, the city council, let me just preface it by saying, I'd say of the governmental structures that the, and organizations, that the city council is the closest thing to the people. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my premise. And that one of our jobs would be, and this was particularly after George Floyd was killed and, and the trouble all around in the summer, the different problems and riots and police brutality and all that. That there maybe needed to be, the city council maybe needed to take a, a larger role of being an outlet for the community, of being a clearinghouse for the community, of being a monitoring place to make sure if there were things happening in our community that were civil rights issues or violations that, or even if, without even making them judgmental, that were just bugging people, a place for people to be able to talk about it and to, for Springfield to look like it was doing things, or it had a place for the community to do, to do that. But in terms of a review board, like you're talking about, is that a specific idea that you're bringing up that you think is a good thing, or is that part of what you think this committee is doing?
So both, it's an idea that I have been pondering for a while as well. But also, yes, I did want the review board to also be able to like, maybe be a place to filter out, you know, racial justice complaints and, and things like that. Or somewhere just to go, if they don't want to go to the police department to put in any type of civilian complaint or something outside the scope of the police department, but they do want to look that they could come to this review board where we, we're always gonna be, one of us can be there or all of us and, and we would sit on it as well, the committee. So, you know, that was just one of the ideas that I think that sometimes the grant money that comes to the city isn't fairly distributed, and I think that it needs to be reviewed. I mean, past and present and future money that comes into the city along with contracts that go out. Like, we need to review because a lot of times, even with like awarded contracts, they go to the REO and they ask for waivers because they can't find qualified people to, qualified people to fill like the minority quota or the women or veteran quota. But where are you looking? Where are you advertising? Where, where do you go? Like, just saying that you advertise and you couldn't find these employees isn't enough. Like, are you advertising in a point of view? Are you advertising elsewhere? Are you advertising on WTCC? Are you advertising, like, where are you going to find these, this minority quota that you say you cannot fill? So I think that it needs to be reviewed and even past contracts. So that was just one of the ideas I was thinking that the advisory, the racial equity review board could kind of like tackle. And I don't have also specifics on how it will be done. That's something that we would figure out as a group or even if it's feasible. But it's just one idea that I have to bring to such a review board or committee like that.
Okay.
And then the second thing that I would like reviewed is residency waivers. So there's been times when folks have a residency waiver, but they get promoted. And then that makes that residency waiver null and void. And sometimes they get an extension for a year to move back into the city. That never happens, but they're still on this residency waiver. I know that some positions definitely warrant a residency waiver, like some of the positions in Commissioner Carlton Harris' department and the library and things like that. But some of them don't, people don't want to move here, but they want to work here. And so I think that we need to really buckle down and look at the residency waivers that's in the city and why they were given. I know personally, when I worked in the finance department, someone got a promotion and was given an extension of a year to have the residency waiver, and the year passed and they still didn't move into the city. So how is that happening? How are they keep, these certain individuals keep getting extensions and why is that happening? And then quite often I hear residents say, well, this person has a, a job in Springfield and they don't live here. They have my ad, my address of my neighbor, they're my neighbor, but I never see them and things like that. I mean, I don't think that's anything that we can really prove, and I don't know that we have the time to do that. But I don't know how we would tackle things like that. Maybe that's something that we can discuss in the committee, in the group. But definitely, we need to look at residency waivers and figure out who's getting extensions, why, and things like that. And what happens when they actually don't move here and they have like a year extension? So that was the second thing that I had on my list. And then some of the loans, forgiveness loans or grants that happen in the Economic Development Department where if you, if you miss certain criteria, you may have to pay back the loan money. And Justin knows, because we were, we were working on this. And there, there were certain businesses that never had to pay back the money, even if they didn't meet the criteria. And then there were, there are businesses that always have to pay back the money if they didn't meet the certain criteria. And so mostly, the minority businesses would be required to pay back the loan and white businesses wouldn't. And so I wanted to get to the bottom of why that's happening. Why are the white businesses getting forgave, forgiven for the loan for not meeting the same criteria that minority businesses aren't meeting? And so.
Have you really heard that, huh?
Yeah, I heard that. I have some proof behind it that was given to me. So I have a few examples, but I'm not going to publicize them here.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's definitely, it definitely happened. Why is it happening and who, who determines who's forgiven and who's not? You know, is, is everybody given a fair opportunity to maybe meet the criteria before there's, they're responsible for paying back the loan or the grant that they are given? So those were the three things that I have in addition to like if there's any type of racial complaints that isn't handled at the police department, maybe the complaint can come through this racial equity review board. Thoughts? I'm opening the floor to questions, concerns, ideas, whatever you all have.
Hey, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President.
No, I, first of all, appreciate you leading the effort for this subcommittee. I definitely think that this has been one that's been underutilized over the years. From even probably, probably, probably prior to when I joined the city council. So just want to thank you for continuing to lead on this effort. And I do appreciate the idea of the committee that, you know, you raised. I just had a question around like the random selection. I imagine when folks get word that, you know, this will be being created, might generate some, some interest and probably from folks that we know, you know, in the community itself. So I was just wondering how might you go about selecting those individuals on a random basis?
So I was hoping that maybe it would be a process like, um, different committees that have like review boards. You know, maybe the city council gets two seats and then the Chamber of Commerce and then the Latino Chamber of Commerce. And then, you know, different organizations or neighborhood council or something like that will have the opportunity. I don't know about neighborhood council because there's too many in, in city organizations. But I haven't 100% thought the process through, but it would definitely be like a nomination type process from like different organizations.
That sounds good. And just a final note if I can add, just as more of a message to you to help you out in thinking about this. I, you know, I, I think the messaging around the work that that committee will do is going to be really critical because just one thing that I don't, you know, or kind of can foresee happening is folks from the community coming to this, you know, kind of committee with every civil infraction or complaint. And we are not, you know, of course, the body or, you know, judicial body or anything of the nature where a litigation would be kind of the, we wouldn't be the first step for that, you know what I mean? So, or perhaps, and in some cases, and you know, we, it might, it might be. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's not more being spilled into the subcommittee than is, than what is capable to be kind of upheld and kind of, you know, worked on. So that, that's, yeah, the last one.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great to say because we obviously can't handle, you know, thousands of complaints and things like that. But maybe we can be a referral source, like maybe we can say, okay, maybe you could go here or we have this resource for you. Maybe go see, you know, the free lawyers that work downtown in Tower Square. So maybe we can also be like a referral source, but not have, you know, not have all the answers to people's complaints. But yeah, we should like really dig down and figure out what we will handle and what we can handle before we even like open it up to the public. It's probably going to be in the paper, but before we, you know, we have to get a structure around it, of course.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, oh, sorry.
I'm gonna be quick because I definitely have to.
I defer to the Senator.
I have to jump off really quick, but one thing that I did recognize, just on the, the thing that President Williams had stated was that on those kind of specific complaints, that the kind of complaints that we know that we're, we're kind of talking about in a sense, that we don't have to get into the weeds or jump down the rabbit hole. The great thing is off of the police reform, maybe the things that we have to reference to the next step and the next level is that, that commission that was created. And it doesn't necessarily have to come from, you know, the police commission or the CBHB. And when it comes to those kind of complaints that we're talking about, that we're not that kind of body that's going to be seeing those and, or appearing to that. So I just wanted to just add that and just say, whatever it is that you need from me, I'm here 110% just to, you know, got your back. And it's good to see all of you guys. It's kind of funny, I know it's only been a quick couple of weeks, but I've been so busy just for the next two weeks. But honestly, it's just good to see familiar faces and I, I, hard to believe, I know, but I really do appreciate the heck out of all of you guys. And it's good to hear your voices, Tim, it's nice to see you, Tracy, and also Justin. Good to hear your voice and Counsel Williams, President Williams. I gotta get off, I gotta get on this PvP thing, but I think this is a fantastic way to really, really get to and exercise our, our civil rights, you know. Maybe we could put a hyphen in it, put civil equal rights, but whatever, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
Before you go, I wanted to just say to you, thank you for, you know, still staying out there in the community. I seen you, I think, last night or the night before with the Democratic Committee, telling what you want to see in the future and things you want worked on and some of the bills and everything. And so just keep us informed and however we can help you as well on the state level, you know.
Absolutely. The greatest thing is that I have like three extra weeks now because of COVID to file different pieces of legislation. And honestly, when it comes to municipal things that obviously need an outside resource, the whole reason why I kind of just, kind of stepped into the element was to be able to talk to this legislative body and the things that you guys want to see happen that kind of are not in our purview. But we always say, it's the state, it's the state. So now we have a solid connection, so we can be able to move things, home rule petitions and things of that nature. So I'm just happy to be, one, be part of two bodies, but you know, I know where the heart is.
Yeah, thank you.
Adam, thanks for the reach out and the nice words. Nice to see you.
No, it's.
We'll see you soon.
Yeah, for sure. I'm not going anywhere. COVID got me locked down. I'm in the district office all the time. So if anything, please reach out, door's always open.
Alrighty, thank you, Adam.
Take care, guys.
Counselor Hurst?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate you actually holding one of these, these meetings that are clearly so important, especially during a time like now. What I would like to see from the committee is for them to sort of serve as the conduit between the community and the city council. And it would seem to me that it might make sense to have them, to have the group be representative of a variety of different sectors throughout the city of Springfield. And it'd be nice if they, being that they are closest to the constituents, it'd be nice if they came back to us with the critical issues in their respective fields. And, and then maybe we could kind of narrow them down at that point in time and see which ones we can handle from the city council standpoint and which other issues, you know, might not necessarily be dealt with from the city council. But we certainly can, you know, we can reach out to other orgs or, you know, to, to, you know, to other, other people who might be in charge of having an impact or influence on rectifying some of the issues of concern from the community. So I would like to know what it is that they come up with with respect to issues. I know we all have a variety of issues that, you know, we could probably bring to the forefront. But I would love to hear from them in terms of what it is that they are hearing with respect to the inequities that are occurring throughout the city of Springfield and, and various fields.
No, I love that. And honestly, the issues that I'm bringing forward came from the community. Some of them, I, I agreed with them on, and some of them were issues we were already talking about and researching. But I asked some community folks on, you know, outside the police department, what are some of the complaints or issues that you see? I asked local businesses, different contractors in the city. Mainly folks of color is who I was talking to because that's who I see more and for no particular reason. But that, these three items that I brought to the table did, were repetitive from different community members. And so I just wrote them down. I wrote down them all, but I wrote down the top ones that I was hearing outside of police department. Of course, police department was the most, but you know, there, there is a complaint department with the police department already. So I was like, in addition to what we normally hear as far as the police department goes. So I think that's a great idea. I think that you're right, the representatives should represent the community. I do want it to be a odd number in case there's some type of voting, voting process that they have to have. I'm not married to any number, but I just, you know, want to keep it as small and concise as possible because then, you know, once there's a lot more people, it's a lot more problems, struggles, maybe. But yes, definitely want to hear from them on what they believe and to be a conduit for us in the community. So I like that.
If I could ask Counselor Hurst, Justin, what did you mean by them? You were referring to like another organization, it sounded like, who did you mean they were?
I'm not sure, Counselor Allen. I think I was, by them, I think I was referring to Counselor Whitfield's, the committee that she wants to form. So that, that's what I, I think I was referring to.
Yeah, because he, he said, I think that the committee should represent the community, the Springfield community, and should come from different, did you say sectors within the community?
Different sectors, I mean, you have your business, you know, you have business, you have social services, you have education. You have, I mean, a variety of different fields that I would imagine are impacted, you know, by race relations on a regular basis. And it just would seem that, you know, if we're really going to tackle these issues, we need to know what the issues are. And it seems to me like they're best suited, those individuals are in these fields to bring them back to our attention. And, you know, then at that point in time, we could work with folks to try and figure out how to, how to tackle these issues.
Okay.
So that was the group.
Thank you.
I would like to, I'm sorry, Count, President Williams?
Madam Chair, I was just also gonna add, just to piggyback on that, you know, I, I see this as possibly another good opportunity to, I know we don't really make too much of good use with kind of, you know, partnering with other subcommittee chairs to, to have or, you know, to conduct meetings on a variety of topics or issues. But this, this is one where I see potential there in the, in the kind of, in the essence of what you said as related to, you know, like, you know, contractors or REO related things, for example. You know, that might be an opportunity to, to partner with, you know, Chair Person Edwards for REO to, to kind of unveil things related to, if you're looking at that specific issue, right? Or if you're trying to do anything with auditing any of the city services, for example, that might be an opportunity to, to partner with Chair Chairman Hurst on, on that particular topic. So just, you know, just food for thought.
Thank you. Everyone's a partner on the city council, so that'd be great. If anyone has any ideas, advice on how to really get the committee structured, how to get it formed and then, you know, help narrow down what the focus would be, that would be great. I am so open to ideas. I want this to be a group joint effort. I don't want it to be a Tracy Whitfield thing. I want it to be something that's going to benefit all of us as well as the community because we just really don't know all that's happening, all that's said in the community. And I think that this will help us build relationships in the community because folks will feel like they're being heard. And right now, a lot of people don't feel that way. And so we have to figure out how we're going to change that. And I think that this would be a great way to do that and hear from the community. So it's for all of us, so I definitely appreciate that. And I'm, I will partner with whoever wants to partner.
Yeah, I think there's some great ideas here and trying to figure out, I mean, there, there's more. As President Williams said before, there's, we have to be careful to not take on more than we can actually handle because we don't really have an operational side to us. And I don't know if we should review this list and see what the most important things are on it. Or, I mean, I could document, put a little document together or something. I won't say minutes of the meeting, but just with these ideas and send them around, you know, I'm not. So, I mean, I'm happy to, I've just been taking some notes and, and, you know, the first idea was the board, racial, racial equity review board, for lack of a better name. The second idea was reviewing contracts. Another idea was reviewing residency waivers, kind of still in the reviewing kind of role. Reviewing forgiveness loans. So there's three ideas, separate ideas, all had to do with reviewing city business, financial business, personnel business, to see if it's being handled in a way that is consistent with how it's supposed to be handled. Then there was, I guess you can throw that into residency waivers. So contracts, resident, oh, I guess I said that, residency waivers and forgiveness loans.
And then. Any grant funding that's available for the community, whether it's housing grants, whether it's any grants in economic development, any grants that's available for the community. Kind of want to figure out where it's going, spike it out and see if it's being supplied equitably to, you know, folks in the community.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I just wrote that one down too. And, and I wrote down something that I didn't say, but was like a breakdown of our, do we want to, you know, have a breakdown of our hiring or say, what's the, you know, racial breakdown of the employees of the city of Springfield? Or, you know, we've always said, the police have said they're the most diverse police department in Massachusetts or something. I, I don't want to be a bean counter about this, but it would, we don't, I mean, that would be tiresome and it would be like we're looking over everybody on every little detail. Not sure that's good, but, but maybe getting some statistics or something early in the year and talking to the people that control these different areas would be something we could do. Talk to TJ or whatever about grants or, you know, that sort of thing. But, or, or talk to them and give them a chance to give input on this stuff before we put it into a, like, we definitely want to do this kind of thing. You know, have a reach out to the people who, like contracts, who's in charge of contracts and residency waivers would be Mahoney probably. Forgiveness loans, is that like Tim Sheehan or those like?
That's Tim Sheehan.
Okay, and like, you know, get some input from people as to how this stuff works now. So, and that would be like telling them, these are some things we're thinking of paying attention to. How does it work now and how, how do you pay attention to it now? And, because it will feel, you know, it could have a, you know, some rubbed some people the wrong way. So, and that's okay if we need to do that because something's wrong, then we need to do that. But I think we should probably hear them out a little bit or ask some questions. Another thing I had written down was clearinghouse for injustices. Somebody, somebody feels they were mistreated in a public, you know, by a public official of some sort versus mistreated by a private person. I, I don't know, this, this could get, you know, kind of clumsy. But are we thinking that we would just be working in the public domain? Or would, would we go beyond that? These are just ideas at this point, so.
Right, ideas. And I don't have the answers to everything, it's something that needs to be discussed and kind of spiked out. Right, ideas, and I don't have the answers to everything. It's something that needs to be discussed and kind of spiked out. Um but I don't think it's unreasonable to look at the hiring practices of the city. Is it diversified? Um because of Council President Williams, we have a chief diversity and inclusion officer um to make sure that. You know, the hiring practices are avoid ineptism, are diverse, are uh fair and equitable. And so I don't think it's unreasonable, even if we start with from mid to upper management. What's the percentage of diversity there? What's the percentage of women? What's the percentage of, you know? Veterans, I don't know, disabled folks, um so I don't think that's unreasonable to ask.
Madam Clerk, oh, I'm just Madam Clerk, Madam President, I'm sorry. Uh, Madam Chair, I apologize, I I can't, I'm on my phone, so um having a little trouble trying to figure out how to raise my hand right now.
That's okay.
But I think to, you know, Counselor Allen's point and then also to your point, I mean, we do have Attorney G. Who is the Chief Diversity Officer, and so I think a lot of the um, you know, she might have some of this data. And she also might be a nice starting point in terms of identifying what it is that she is doing. Um and having her potentially give us an update, if not us, that maybe the entire council. Um and President Williams, I I sort of dropped the ball uh or or maybe I didn't drop the ball, maybe COVID caused us to drop the ball. Um but she was supposed to brief the council in terms of the work that she was doing right before COVID hit. Uh and then we just were never able to circle back around, so it might be nice uh to allow her to either brief the council or brief this committee. In terms of what it is that we are doing, and she also might save us a lot of time and work, especially if she has access to this information. Uh or has plans on doing some of the things that folks are talking about now that she's uh been in her role for. Uh, you know, a couple of years now, so um I would definitely uh plan on having a conversation with her. Um at some point in time, you know, once we get further along.
That's perfect, and I think she would be great to like brief this um advisory board on what's happening, so she come in with. One percentage and let's just say it's low, maybe w- when we meet on a monthly, bi-monthly, how whatever the committee decides. Um as or we decide as a meeting time, she could just give us updates on how we're doing. Um I definitely don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah, I think um, I think that's a great idea, uh Justin.
Yeah.
And this is, I like I've, I haven't really talked with her. She's always on my list as someone I want to reach out to and. Some of you were on that panel at Springfield College where she was on the panel and and um. And, you know, hearing her just then, I was very interested in how she, how professional she was doing her job. I was just very impressed with her that night. And I yet I haven't had a further conversation and maybe that's one of our first things as we. Put together this list of things we've been talking about and ask her to to come and. Tell us where we're on base and where we're off base and what she's taking care of and. Um because she's in the administration, she's probably had some of these conversations that we're talking about. She probably had some of them. Um, I think that's a great idea.
And if I can just add really quick to to Madam Chair, I know I I certainly agree with uh Counselor Hurst. I I know we we were having those um. Discussions kind of throughout last year and definitely with COVID, it's it's just it just this did not happen um at any point in time, but. Um, yeah, I think that also might help us avoid kind of any duplication of efforts as you hadn't mentioned, you know, where. She can kind of contextualize the work she's doing. Um and also it might be a good opportunity to bring in Commissioner Carlton and uh. I who I believe just established like the racial equity department or something of that nature. Um, yeah, just, you know, to see if there's any opportunities to partner there. Or to kind of, you know, stand outside of those issues and address, you know, others that they're not particularly, so. Um, yeah, just I I see some, definitely some room for for partnership and. And hopefully, again, um getting that information on the front end. Will might even help you steer kind of those issue areas a little better, you know, kind of just what the city is is doing.
Thank you. So you guys gave great ideas. I'm I'm typing them down in my little notes right here. Um for a follow-up meeting, I I kind of got to move these meetings along rather quickly because I don't want like so much time to go by. That we don't get anywhere and then it's time to change roles again, and so I'm hoping to have this. Um review board or whatever we're going to call it um up by the second quarter of the year. And so um getting our ideas and thoughts together, so Counselor Allen, I appreciate you putting the list together. Uh for circulation and um any other ideas that you all have, please feel free to email me. Um or email, I don't know if we can email the subcommittee, I don't know what's, you know, if we're going to be in quorum violation or whatever, but. Um on an individual level, I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, I mean, for me to put out minutes or something, I should, you always get into that, nobody can reply. Because then it's like a discussion you're having. Um I think you, I think you, like, maybe if I just put. Uh, you know, half a page of minutes together uh and just send them to Kelly and Susan. And then I I I never know the right way to do this, but.
Maybe we could check with the clerk and um see what she suggests.
All right.
Getting them around for, so I'll send her an email just asking her.
All right.
Would be best handled, but thank you for putting those together.
Okay.
You can send them to me for review, so if I have anything I want to add to them, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure, I will do that.
Thank you. So.
I would suggest, based on that, the, everybody seemed to have a positive response to Justin's suggestion about Talia. Why don't we have our next meeting? Why don't we invite her to our next meeting?
Sure, that'd be great.
To see if we're. I think she would help set us straight and plus, the administration has a person designated for some of what we just talked about. So we would, we would be. Basically, um using the person in the administration who has this job to some degree, or she could tell us. What she thought, what she knows and what is part of her job and what isn't. Give us a little guideline so that we start off on the right foot with this.
Perfect, so um Mark, um Counselor Williams, will you be setting up? Or I could set up another racial justice meeting, subcommittee meeting and invite her to it.
Yeah. Yeah, um. I, you know, I think I I think this is a good, how, you know, perhaps if we can put this in the context of the subcommittee first. And then um after, can you hear me, Counselor?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Sorry.
I I got some crying kids in the background. I don't know what's happening out there, but um.
I'm sorry. I saw your face and I was just, I was wondering, but anyways, no, we we could, um, yeah. And feel free to invite her for the the next subcommittee meeting and then, you know, maybe perhaps when we're doing a report out on on the meetings. Um, that might be a better opportunity for her to address the full body um after the remarks you share based on what happened in the subcommittee.
Okay, perfect. So um I'll probably have these meetings pretty regular until the board is um. Established. I'm not saying every week, but maybe um every two weeks. And so we'll just bring more information. I'm sure if we can send the minutes out. And um some of the other counselors have ideas, I would like to incorporate everyone's ideas, um at least for discussion, not that. We have to accept every idea, but um I would just like voices to be heard.
Mm-hmm. So I'll get, I'll get something to you, Trey, tonight or first thing in the morning.
I appreciate it, and then I'll check with um.
We'll check with uh Tashina as to what we do.
Tashina, see what we can do with that. Hi?
Sounds good.
All right. Counselor President Williams, I see you unmuted. Did you have a final comment or?
No, I'm off, I'm off that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you, President, I mean, Counselor Hurst. It's a mixed up still.
You and I both, no, I I think this is excellent meeting and, you know, I look forward to future meetings. Uh so keep up the good work and it's good we're having a dialogue around these difficult issues. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, um Steve and Peter for joining us and we are going to um adjourn the meeting at this time.